You are watching Channel 97, Access La Porte County. Coming up next is the June 8th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find the information on this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
All right, it is 5:32. We'll call the Commission for Women to order. Nicole, can you hear us?
Nicole, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can someone do roll call for me? I forgot to print out the attendance sheet.
Okay. Present.
Sarah Jones.
Present.
Veronica Mark.
Baymore.
Present.
Albertine Allen.
Present.
Charlene Lipsey.
Nicole Coleman.
Bonnie Schaff, present. Angie Nelson-Deitch.
Present.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here today. First thing to do is the approval of our March minutes. I'm sorry, our April minutes.
I make the motion to approve the April 21st, 2022 minutes.
Second. All in favor of do a.
Aye.
I think we need to do a roll call. Sorry, ladies.
Yeah, since it's Zoom. So I guess to make it easy, if you want for the roll call, just have everybody say their name and say aye, so that it'll be recorded and everybody doesn't have to read it. So just go down the line and then do Zoom.
Sarah Jones, aye.
Baymore, aye.
Bonnie Schaff, aye.
Christina Isabel, aye.
Joanne Anquist, aye.
And then Zoom.
Nicole Coleman, aye.
Nicole Coleman, aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Treasurer's report, Charlene Lipsey is not here, so we will table that for next week. The next order of business is a funding request sent to us by Dunebrook. Has everyone had a chance to read this?
Yes.
They are requesting $498.98. This will help support funds for snacks and foods for the children. All in favor? All right, let's go down the line. We need to make a motion.
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
And. Sarah Jones, aye.
Baymore, aye.
Bonnie Schaff, aye.
Christina Isabel, yes, aye.
Joanne Anquist, approve.
Albertine.
Albertine Allen, aye.
Nicole Coleman, aye.
Great. I am very excited to inform Dunebrook of the approval of their project. Now we are going on to the August 26th, celebrating 10 years of the Women's Commission. We do have a subcommittee meeting minutes to approve. Does everyone have those or need them?
Is it, it was the, I think I saw those already. I don't know if someone can give a synopsis of what they were. Okay. Oh, that's easy enough. Thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion and make the motion we approve.
Second. And roll call.
Sarah Jones, aye.
Baymore, aye.
Bonnie Schaff, aye.
Christina Isabel, aye.
Joanne Anquist, aye.
Nicole Coleman, aye.
Albertine Allen, aye.
Okay, well then those minutes passed. Now, the one thing, as you'll see on the agenda, we're now discussing the event. My question is, we never actually approved the event itself. Do we need to do that? And I'm sorry, I just don't know.
I have a question. Did, was there a budget or anything put forward or anything? So we just need to, just a formal, okay, I mean, you have a committee. I think, I think it wouldn't hurt to have a motion to approve moving forward with the event. The, the event, just so that it's on the record.
Yeah. So again, what we are doing here is for the August 26th event, we'll be celebrating 10 years of the Women's Commission. We were honored, the commissioners and their community leadership. This will be held on Women's Equality Day, Equality Day, which is August 26th. That is a Friday. The goal of the program is to have some keynote speakers to share our upcoming programs and goals and to help us raise funds to continue those projects. All in favor of an event on August 26th?
Or I would just.
Or how does this go?
Just, yeah, I would still take entertain a motion.
Okay.
For, to support the event, just to have it on the record, have a first and a second, and then just vote on it. And then you work out the budget part later, because I think the fundraising will cover most of it. So it's not like it's going to cost anything.
Right.
Except for some of the upfront fees. So I would just have someone do a formal, a formal motion.
Albertine Allen, I do a formal motion to approve the sponsorship recommendations for our anniversary title dinner, anniversary dinner on August 26th, 2022.
I second.
And down the line.
Sarah Jones, aye.
Baymore, aye.
Bonnie Schaff, aye.
Christina Isabel, aye.
Joanne Anquist, aye.
Albertine Allen, aye.
Nicole Coleman, aye.
Great. So the August 26th is ago. Excellent. We have the, the subcommittee did, the O'Rourke Temple Shrine was available for that date, and we have put a deposit on that. Albertine, can you inform me of what that deposit was?
Holy smoke. I think it was, did I give my receipt to somebody?
I do not, no.
Yes, I did.
I think you gave it to Charlene at the, I'm sure at the last meeting.
Wow. I think it's three, was it 375 or 350? Let me find my paper here. You might as well go ahead and tie my notes.
Okay. So basically, we can say at this point that a deposit has been.
Yeah, I made a deposit to the O'Rourke Temple.
We have a save the date card that I would like everyone to take a look at, to see if that seems good. So everyone got a chance to look at this? I have not added the place yet. So just noting that we want to make sure that we put the O'Rourke Shrine on that.
And the cost.
And the cost of the event. Thank you. I think it needs some commas, is what I actually think it needs.
Could I ask how people are going to pay for the tickets? Paid online or, or make?
My goal is to create an Eventbrite, so that everything will be taken care of online and we will not have to worry about people sending in. Thank you.
Only thing I would recommend is for any sponsorships, because Eventbrite will take, for the tickets, I think the way the ticket price is set, it covers the cost of Eventbrite. It will cover the cost, but for anything like, for the sponsorships that we're going to discuss, I would recommend a check being sent, because you don't want fees for bigger amounts. You don't want to pay for those.
That seems right, yes.
So maybe we'll just have the checks payable.
How, who do we send that to?
So let me find out from controller, how we do that. Do they just put a memo line? Is it made out to the city of Michigan City and then maybe a memo line for the event? Maybe something like that. So let me find out from them, because the sponsorship package can be different from what's on Eventbrite.
Right.
So we can, we, you know, once we agree on that, we can make something pretty and then send that out to the businesses and stuff.
Great. Yeah, because if we want sponsorships, then we can just state, you know, on Eventbrite to contact, so it's up directly. Okay. The only other thing that I would say that we don't have on there is the potential of who the keynote speaker would be. And if that is a draw, which I'm going to just jump ahead to that point, if that's okay with everybody. I have reached out to Jordan Teske Harrison, who is the Director of the State Commission for Women of Indiana. We've had a great conversation, and I looked over about 15 Torchbearer Award winners in the past. And had a very lovely conversation with a woman by the name of Rabbi Sandy Sasso. Very incredible woman who, yeah, started Change for Indiana. It's a lobbyist advocate group for women's issues. And back in 2016, she was the first female rabbi ordained in 1974. She has, I could read her bio, maybe. Is anyone familiar with Rabbi? She is also an award-winning book author. She writes children's books. She's currently directing a program through Purdue University and Indiana University with spirituality in the arts. So she's just a really powerful woman and a speaker that I think would bring a lot of, you know, enthusiasm for us and to get us excited about what we need to, to kind of prepare for in this coming years. I also had a great conversation with her just about advocacy and understanding, again, what our, what our ordinance is and what we are trying to do in that amount of time, as Joanne again reminded me that this is a democratic process. It takes a long time to get things done, so I must slow down a little bit. But I've really learned a lot from talking to both of those women. Jordan will be coming down. They're inviting all of the state Women's Commissioners to come down. We are also in, both of us are trying to connect more women commissions, the Monroe Commission for Women, as well as the Gary Commission for Women, which I don't know if you guys know this, but the Gary Commission for Women is being an advocate for women, is also runs a shelter, Rainbow Art Shelter.
I did not know that.
It is amazing, and I'm just like, I can't wait to reach out to them. I'd really like for them to be, be present. So definitely making a lot of connections there.
Yeah, I'll check and see if I know anybody on the commission, especially my connection to the urban league. And I, and I did speak to State Rep Pat Boy. She, she's willing to participate wherever you need her.
Great.
On the program.
Yep. And that was going to be my other, so if we had Rabbi Sandy Sasso as our keynote speaker, but then we also had Rep Pat Boy, then we can like really pay attention to what's going on and how we want to make some changes. And then the, the third speaker would be Sharon Carnes as the first commissioner. So those are my, the three speakers. So I guess suppose that might be nice to have on the save the date card, because that might be a draw for certain people. The one thing about, that we need to kind of clarify though, is Rabbi Sandy Sasso lives in Indianapolis. So she does have a fee, so we would need to be okay with that. Her original rate was 3,000. I said, what was your lowball rate? She said 15, 1,500. And I would need to get her down here, because I don't think she drives, or maybe, you know, it's a two and a half hour drive. So.
So is that her fee plus transportation and hotel and all of that?
She wants to go back, is the other thing, because she has a bat mitzvah the next day.
So we're paying for transportation.
So these are things that we need to decide on, if we're willing to do that.
Only question I would have then is maybe a future event that may be separate from our anniversary? Because that's a tight window, so we're going to have to drive her here, have her here, and then she has to be driven back.
My only thing was this, if any of the state commissioners from Indianapolis come down.
Maybe they could.
Then that's what I was thinking. But I'm. Yes. She doesn't want to drive by herself. So there's the, a little bit of complications.
Wow, that's a lot to think about. I would have recommended Pat Boy be our keynote speaker, since she's the one that initiated this in the first place.
Yeah, I, I was thinking, you know, I, I like the idea of having Pat and Sharon. I, I was thinking you wanted some, something more, kind of more of a motivational advocacy spin on it. And I'm wondering, is there anybody, you know, the Chief Diversity Officer for Indiana is out of South Bend.
Who is that, Angie?
She worked for Notre Dame. I knew soon as I said it, I was gonna.
I still can't find my, my notes for how much it costs. I can't even find the checkbook.
Like I said, I did really like her. She had some interesting points that she would talked about and that she would make in her speech, but she knows that we're going to consider it, so.
And we, we have the money, don't we? I mean, I just, I, I agree with having like a, Kara. Kara Herring is another person. First Equity Officer for the state of Indiana. She was appointed in October of last year, I think.
That would be nice.
But she's out of South Bend, I'm certain. But her, her last name is H E R R I N G.
Okay.
And her first name is Kara, S A A R R A H. And that could be an opportunity and probably no cost.
Yes.
That would be the only difference.
Well, Rabbi Sasso said that if she was a little closer, she wouldn't charge. So.
So, so you haven't actually made a firm commitment with Rabbi?
No, not at all. No. We just had an initial conversation, her interest, that she would really like to be involved. So.
But, but was she firm on the 1,500 that we could, she would do it for 1,500?
Yes. I mean, she's, you know, she said she would.
Okay.
Maybe we might even be able to go down a little lower, but, you know, it's still about transportation.
What if she doesn't have a, someone that's going to drive her? I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand all the dynamics, because it seems like that's kind of up in the air. It's, it has to be firm. If she will find a ride or.
Miss connections here, and that might be taken care of.
Joanne's mic is not on.
It's on. You just gotta.
It's, it's, it's on. I didn't have my mouth in the right place.
So if we still have our commission meeting on the.
Because I would have to contact Kara Herring, just to see if she's available.
Because when is our next meeting?
Right now, the 16th.
So if we kept our meeting date, would that give, that might give a time to secure. And it would be a quick meeting, because we've done all this stuff tonight.
Yeah.
Maybe that, that could work.
Yeah, yeah, give me two weeks would be enough time to kind of find and talk to other people. So. Okay, great. We're going to hold off on that conversation.
We have some good possibilities.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be a really powerful evening of speakers. Great. So let's switch now. Let's go back to our schedule, our event needs. So Bonnie is going to take the lead on our history cards and the table displays. Is that correct? Great. And the, and once again, those will be honoring Michigan City women. We will have an interactive portion of that, where the table will get up and like give us a fact, and then the rest of us will try to answer who that person is, and we all have a little bit of education as well.
Are you going to give us a list then? Yeah.
We had already discussed about 10 people, yeah.
10?
10 or 12, and they're all people that, there are a couple of them that I thought you might be able to write the bio for, but otherwise I'm, I have information about, or know where to get information about the rest of them.
Instead of the big, big house on Sunday.
She's one of memories.
Great. So we don't have anything to report on that, but know that that is happening. And we did discuss some names at the last meeting, so. Maybe on the 16th, you can hear that list again, Bonnie, or something.
Want me to read it now?
No, no, on the 16th.
Okay.
All right. And now we're on to the sponsorships. I don't know if everyone had a chance to see, Angie sent us some nice sponsorship recommendations. Everyone have a copy of that?
You want me, I can go over it real quick?
Fantastic.
So we talked at the last meeting about creating a sponsorship package to send out to companies. And I wanted to get feedback and input on if these amounts seem right or too high. We have the 10, 10-year anniversary title sponsorship, which would be $5,000. It would be naming right, so it'd be, you know, the Michigan, 10-year Michigan City Women's Commission Anniversary, presented by whomever, PNC Bank, Horizon Bank, NIPSCO. I'm just going to name a bunch, so that you all hear that I'm going to be asking. And, and they would receive two tables of eight. They would bring, be able to bring a banner if they wanted to, to the event. And their logo would be pretty much on everything, and we would recognize them. But we would also allow them to do the opening welcome. We'll have a welcome from, from, you know, the Chair of the Women's Commission, but then we would bring up the company to be able to say a few words about whatever they're doing, you know. So that's $5,000. The second one, and I, I just put these names on here. You, you, I'm not that creative, so if you have any titles or names of these, let me know. I put an Equality Day sponsorship at $3,000, and that's one table of eight. They can also bring a banner, but they will have recognition on print and social media and verbal recognition at the event as well. Then I have the 19th Amendment sponsorship at 1,500, and that's just a table of eight and recognition in a press release on the slideshow at the event, as we, you know, show our, our different sponsorships on the slide that's, you know. And then the last one, just for people who want to participate, but also give a little bit. I called it a Women's Impact Patron Sponsor for $250, and that's two seats, you know, two tickets, and then recognition on the slideshow. And I didn't put $1,000 in there. I was trying to spread it out enough that there was options, because we really want people to do 1,500 at least. And that will help with a lot of the programming that we want to do. So this is, I kind of threw this together, just to get your, your feedback on if this is kind of the direction or that you think this might work.
Clarification here, of the 19th Amendment sponsorship, that could be for individuals, correct?
It's a table of eight, though.
Right.
Yes. Yes, so anybody could do a sponsorship. So yes, it could be an individual or a company. So yes, if I wanted to be a, give $1,500, I could sponsor it, and my name would be in the program. So yes. Or they could do, if they want to do 5,000, I, whatever, whoever gets first dibs, I'm going to put the call out on the 5,000 as first, you know, whoever gives first, we, the one that gets the title sponsor. So, you know, typically, we try to go with our companies that are based here, you know, some of the large corporate donors, but, you know, if we could get a couple of these $1,500 ones and $3,000 ones, that.
That would be amazing.
Right?
And then as individual tickets, are we still looking at the $50 or would it be more?
I wrote down 75.
Oh, 75.
I believe it was $75.
I'm sorry. Okay, 75.
And then I think that's the only thing that we, we talked about, the food at the last meeting. And I think with the food, the cost of Eventbrite and a few other things, we won't, we'll make something off of it, but not a whole lot. I mean, but it covers all the costs.
Yeah. Now, this is helpful to see it like this, because I was a little concerned we weren't going to cover costs, because, but this would definitely allow us to do that. Great. Does anyone have any feedback on this? Any changes, any thoughts?
I think it looks good.
Yeah, it looks great. I love the idea.
Well, I'll clean it up. This, I threw this together for, so that you can all see it. And, and I think that we probably would need some type of motion to accept the amounts. and I think that we probably would need some type of motion to accept the amounts for, um, the sponsorship recommendation.
You want a motion now?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the sponsorship recommendations as is.
I will second that.
And down the line.
Sarah Jones, aye. Kaymore, aye. Bonnie Shaw, aye.
Christina Isabelle, aye.
Joanne, I enclosed, aye.
Nicole Coleman, aye.
Aubrey T. Nolan, aye.
All right, motion passed, sponsorship recommendation.
I'll clean this up and, and find out from the controller what needs to go on here and all of that.
Do we have a list of businesses that we would be approaching? Is there a list around of other, or do we need to come up with that list? Of who we would be reaching out for sponsorships?
I'm sure I have a couple from a lot of stuff.
Great. Excellent, um, the next thing on our agenda, um, is the silent auction items. We will need some support in making those, um, um, getting, acquiring those auction items, um. Would anyone be interested in signing on to that, to lead that task? I'm afraid this is my first go around, so I don't even know what entails that. If I could help, but I don't, I've not done this before, so. Okay, I have until August first.
Excellent.
We, we did at the last meeting talk about, um, if all of the, I think we did, all the commissioners, if we all could donate one bottle of wine, that we could do maybe one nice, um, wine basket. That way, does, it's not a whole lot of out of everybody's pocket, but that's a nice.
That's a nice thing.
If everybody donates one bottle of wine, create a basket.
Well, another thing too, if you currently, uh, are, you know, are seeing plays and you have an extra ticket for play or some other event, concerts, opera. Those are wonderful.
Joanne needs to pull her mic closer.
Sorry about that.
So anything that's.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes.
I just said that, uh, if you had something else to contribute, like an opera seat, a ticket to the, a theater like Goodman or something, or, uh, I, I love those, I love those things, I really do, those, those always attract me.
Probably anything after like October date, they have time to prepare for it.
Um, Rabbi Sasso will donate some books, kids' books to it. So, yeah, looking at any store, if they have something that they wanna donate to the cause or sports events, restaurants.
And we should put that on the sponsorship, um, I know, I think we had for sponsorship for, uh, gift, gift baskets. And, um, I know at a couple of events, we, we had restaurants donate twenty-five for fifty dollars. And we created, uh, gift card trees, where it was like worth three hundred dollars, cause they had so if every restaurant gives fifty dollars or, or, could do like a restaurant tree. Now, that's a, probably a simpler one, cause it's, I think for the silent auction, it's nice to have a couple of bigger ones versus a lot of little ones, cause it, it's a lot of effort if you got a fifty dollar gift card by itself, but if you got like ten of those, five hundred dollars worth, you're probably, you, you'll get more people. Like that, but, um.
So you're saying put all those gifts, gift cards together and make it one item?
Or, or two, it just depends on how many you get. It just depends on how many you get, you can kind of mix them up, but because you don't want it to be, uh, cumbersome with a lot of big items that you have to pick up and, and all of that. Yes, alright.
And, and also artists, like a painting, you know, work of art, jewelry.
Yep, we can always pair those together, if people wanna donate something small, just make.
I have a, a donation of a, um, painting, but I haven't picked it up, I don't even know what it looks like.
And you might want to keep it.
What, what about the, uh, large stores like Walmart, um, Myers, Lowe's and those stores? Are, are, do you have anybody special that you want to talk to them with and take that sponsorship letter or whatever, so, so they can give a contribution? Cause they have gift cards too.
Yeah.
Everybody going to the same, we need a list of where we're gonna go, so we don't hit that person twice.
Well, I think the sponsor, the silent auction committee will handle that. The list, we, we won't want everybody doing it unless there's a list, they created the list, and if you know somebody there, they can ask the committee members to help if they don't know anybody there. Let them, let funnel it through them so that we don't bump heads.
Yeah. Great, um, next, um, we have music.
Before you go, I just have a question. Angie, so we have two members on the silent auction, so do we have to post that when they meet? As a committee, but if you have more than two or, or you don't have to post.
So, let me, let me go back to that, so how many, how many commissioners do we have? Nine, so if you ever have more than five, you're, you're, you have a quorum. But if you have subcommittees that are four or less, and you have a budget or you're doing things, you all can meet and do what you need to do, you don't need to, you can send minutes if you want, you know, to the, to the group, but you don't have to, um, post a, it doesn't have to be so formal for a subcommittee. Um, I still would notify people that you're having it, but you don't have to go through all of the, you just don't wanna have a quorum on your subcommittees. They can do the work and, and get stuff done, especially for an event like this, you don't have to have a public meeting for every single meeting that you're having to, to do your work, and I think that's where, you know, but if, but if a decision has to be made like a financial decision, that needs to come back to the commission. So, as you, you know, basically, we've approved the event tonight, we've approved the sponsorship package, right? Now, we all can go forth and conquer, you're working on the speaker. You know, I would think that we would have to have agreement on the speaker, so that's why you're coming back next. But it's only when you have to have, um, buy-in from the whole entire, um, board or there's a financial impact that you really need to bring it back to the, to the commission, but other than that, for, uh, an event, go do your, go do your thing, but soon as you have five people and you start making decisions, has to come to the whole commission.
And remember, those decisions cannot be made with the main receiver.
That's, that's true.
Please, let's not do that.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's, I think that's just a good train, thought, if it, if it's, if it's more than that, we might as well just have a meeting.
Great. Um, so next is music entertainment techniques, um. I started to do a little bit of research on like how much bands cost and, um, or even DJs, you know, ranging from eight hundred to twelve hundred to full bands, two thousand to five thousand, so, I know. Um, and, but there might be people look, they might be, I might be looking in the wrong area, or you might know really great DJs or a band that we could check out, so there, we need to have a kind of music entertainment. Kind of two people to help us kind of look at that and then bring it back to the group would be awesome. Um, I was thinking that it would be really nice, and I, I've not done any outreach on this whatsoever. Um, but I've worked with the South Shore Dance Alliance, which is out of Gary. And it's a really incredible dance company, um, youth dance company, and I think, I thought it would be really great to at least have one kind of performance, one like, um, inspiring performance from kids, um, was one of my thoughts. Um, again, I haven't reached out or anything like that. Or if there's any other, you know, you know, we often have the poet, um, uh, blanked on her name.
Carnessa.
Who I like a lot, I mean, you know, is, again, is a great entertainer. If we need any, any of that or not, that's something to consider. Any thoughts there?
I do have one, I, I, and I should have asked this earlier, the timing on the event seems long.
Is that too long?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I meant to bring that up, um, especially for, for our commission. I think we have, um, six to eleven, I think the door is being open at six. And like having like, uh.
I just temporarily, I mean, again, this was just a. Well, I mean, I'm usually ready for ten to be done too, but I, so six, I thought six to six forty-five was the cocktail hour. Seven to eight dinner, eight to nine presentations, and then maybe just an hour of dancing.
Dance music, that's, that's different, and that'll not only cost more, but we also have to give people time to dance, um.
In, in program, I, I can tell you, my, my attention span is we should be done with the program by no later than nine, and the program should not be over an hour, like the actual program.
Right, agreed, agreed.
So. If you backtrack, if you have dancing, you know, and silent auction ends, and, and that's the other thing, you gotta be careful of that, the silent auction and what time that ends, cause people will leave and start, um, flocking out, but whenever the, the program should definitely be no later than eight o'clock.
Right.
Eight o'clock should start by eight, and the silent auctions should, should end like before the program starts.
Oh, before the program starts.
You know, cause I always find, I'm like hanging around.
Yeah.
Trying to wait around, I'm ready to go, but I'm waiting till everything's over and it's like, you know, it gives the, the team time to gather some, you know, for it to be closed. And then to wrap up after the speakers and everything is done, everything is down. And you don't have to worry about going back and looking and it just, it, it breaks up the people start going back and out, outside to check their stuff, while the speakers are speaking and you know, I would think from six to eight, they should have decided on what they were gonna buy, I mean.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, so I think what you're saying is we did need an end time to the silent auction.
So that the program could start.
Yes, okay.
And then they could be announced after the speakers, and that could be part of the program as you're wrapping up, so that people still have time to get through things and dance if they want or whatever afterwards, but I, I know it gets, it gets cumbersome.
No, I like, I like the silent auction ending earlier than later. People just kind of hang around for that last signature.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll say that, like roughly silent auction ends at eight fifteen.
After, after dinner.
Speaker, yeah, after dinner.
Dinner.
Well, cause then the presentations would happen at eight, so, um. And then we can announce them before the dancing begins?
Before people leave so they can check out, some people may not stay for the dance, and that way, they have the option to stay or check out or whatever.
I mean, I like the idea of dancing, cause I think it's really important in today's, right now, we need to have moments of joy as a community, we need to dance, we need to see each other, we need to like, uh, so I think it, dancing seems important to the event, but understand, you know, that eleven could be too long.
We could even say ten thirty.
Thirty, we'll say ten thirty, okay, great.
We have our breast cancer ball, we always put ten thirty or eleven, but we're always through by ten.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm probably, great, um, would anyone like to be on that music entertainment?
I have some cheaper options, options available.
Yeah, cause I was.
I can work with you, eh, with Angie on that, if you like. I just need to, okay.
I, I'm, I'm just curious, are you thinking of groups though?
Uh, as far as, um, uh, one, a DJ and then a musician. Like, I was thinking like, um, to reach out to Roscoe Hoffman, sometimes him and a couple of guys get together and just do a little trio thing.
Yeah, it's a little jazz trio.
Yeah, that'd be nice for the dinner.
Right, and then, um, there's DJ that's very reasonable, you can give them a list of songs, so that you can you know, kind of select the songs and real reasonable, like under three, about, about three hundred.
Oh, great.
Fifty dollars.
Way better than what I was finding out, okay.
Cause we're talking more, more, uh, excuse me, talking mostly during the den, um, after dinner in the program. So, if we're only talking three hours, you know, two or three hours, he'll come set up earlier and just have to be there for, you know.
That sounds great, and would, um, should I proceed with looking for a dance, another artistic experience?
I like artistic art.
Uh, the dance company, should I reach out to find some performer?
We have time, looking at the time.
You know, didn't we one time talk about having, uh, Native Americans come and open up our program for us? Did we not talk about that at the, uh, restaurant, one, one of our meetings?
I don't remember.
No. I mean, that would be a beautiful, um, it would be fantastic, but I don't know.
I don't really know any visual artists outside of, um, po- you know, poetry.
Right. Um, the, I will say, um, that the Native American presentation that was, that Kathy, um, Dennis came in and spoke with us, was really an incredible program. It was, it was powerful, moving, um, so I was glad that I was there, I mean, they potentially could come and do something, but we would have to create the right relationship and the right reasoning for, for that.
That's true.
You know. Okay. Um, alright.
I kinda like just having a trio and having, uh, the DJ.
Great.
Because we got the silent auction, we got the presentation to the, the members, and you got a keynote speaker. And I'm like, Angie, I mean, I definitely don't wanna be there no ten o'clock.
Excellent, okay, then there we go, thank you. Alright, so we talked about that, um, additional speaker approval, I think we've discussed that, so. Um, moving on to the women's healthcare, um, we did have two, um, subcommittee meetings. So, I'm just gonna grab my notes here. Now, again, we did not have, we only had, uh, three people or four people at these meetings, so it wasn't a quorum or anything like that. Um, but just, uh, we should approve the minutes, does anyone need to see a copy of that? I can do a little bit of a tally there, first, so the first meeting was at the Lake Shore Coffee. Um, we just talked about the, the micro to the, um, macro to micro and looking at all of the various health um, needs from the mental health needs to women's. and looking at all of the various health, um, needs, from the mental health needs to women's maternal health to cancer, disease, and illnesses. Um, we started to talk at that time about, um, creating surveys. Um, and what does the commu- community need, what do healthcare providers and organizations need? We talked about potential of a healthcare provider gatherings, our community enrichment education support, such as a health fair. On the, the following meeting on May second, um, basically came up with some goals for the women's health research, which is one to encourage communication and coordination through collaboration and partnerships. Identify, promote, and enhance resources already in existence, invite women directly affected to the table, and community pride and opportunities. Um, and the potential programs would be listening groups, the health fair, and the questionnaire and surveys. Uh, we did decide to put the health committee on hold until after August twenty-sixth, as, um, there's just a lot to get done, um, for August twenty-sixth. Um, I will say that I've been, again, I met with, um, Jordan Teskey Har- Harrison. She has sent me over all of the planning and listening session information when they did it ten years ago. Um, I have, uh, a lot of data there to look at. Um, and she is actually interested in, they are interested in re- opening these listening sessions again. So this is something that could take, you know, a little while to make happen, but, um, um, we, we will continue to work on this. She also sent me a, um, uh, we were talking about questionnaires and cert versus surveys. And that we really do want to find the data. We want to give our legislators data so that we can make something happen, right? So that's why this is, is, is important. So she, um, has recommended, um, uh, uh, a software program called Qualt, uh, Qualtrics, um, as the one that we. Yes, Q U A L T R I C S. And so I'm starting to look at this. Um, it is a way to, um, uh, send out the questionnaires and to get the data, and it will, um, analyze it all for you, so. So there, that, but we are putting the Women's Health Subcommittee on hold until after the twenty-sixth. Do we need to approve those minutes or? Would someone like to approve those minutes or, um, motion to approve minutes?
I move that we approve the meeting, the, uh, the notes or the, the the summary of the meetings that we had for our health committee. And I think we just had two or three meetings.
Just two. I second that motion. Sarah Jones, aye?
Baymore, aye.
Bonnie Schaff, aye.
Christina Isabel, aye.
Joanne Anquist, aye.
Nicole Coleman, aye.
And her past. Um, now, I don't know, Nicole, if you'd like to talk a little bit about the breastfeeding law that you were looking at or.
Um, it might be loud in the background, huh? My, I have talked to the business chamber, and they are interested in working with us to promote this to businesses that it is a law and having the businesses start the conversation rather than the individual employee, which I think is gonna be a big change. Currently, in the US and in Indiana, women are allowed pumping breaks when they're breastfeeding, but as we've heard from Dune Brook and as I've known mothers, I think women don't want to advocate, not that they don't wanna advocate for themselves, it's kind of a scary treading of water, right? To ask for more time to take off or a break time to pump. Um, when you're coming back and you just got off of maternity leave and you already feel like you've already put your, your out, so, um, I think it will. The conversation going forward with the chamber will be interesting and we can continue on. And I'm excited to talk to them more about it.
Well, can you tell us if there's something in place now? Uh, I, I'm just curious about language. Is there something in place now in Indiana?
Yes, um, every woman is legally allowed however much time is needed to pump while she's working. Um, Indiana does not have a specific time, uh, some states do. Uh, Indiana said it's up to the mother.
Thank you.
Um, I look forward to hearing what happens as we move forward on that, so. Um, now we're at public comments. Oh, great, um, Council, Leah's comments.
I know, I've been talking the whole meeting, so I, one thing that we gotta go back to, and I don't know, because we, we discussed it at the last meeting. But we didn't vote on anything. We talked about the menu.
Yes.
And, um, we talked about the group that was there at the last meeting. Um, there were the buffet, uh, buffet style dinners that were family style. As we talked about not having people congregate, but the family style, uh, meals, they would bring everything to each of the tables. And, um, and there, uh, was one. We, these prices were, they said they weren't, um, accurate, because all costs have gone up. But, uh, when they, um, shared this with us, uh, there's, um, fa- serve family style. Um, choice of two entrees and one pasta, uh, or just choice of two entrees. And then we still would have to think about a dessert or, um, what that would be, but, um, for those, for that, um, buffet style or family style, um, it includes a choice of one potato and one vegetable that we would have a choice of. Um, and then, um, the entrees that you have options for are are roast beef, baked with recent chicken, sausage and sauerkraut. They have a roasted turkey, um, a Virginia ham, and then they have mozzarella with marinara or Alfredo sauce, and they have a, a roasted pork loin. And, um, we have options with the potatoes, of course, with mashed potatoes and gravy, garlic mash or oven baked or rice, and then the vegetables, a couple of different ones. All of the, uh, above were served with salad, bread and butter, coffee and tea. Um, includes the white table, uh, covers, napkins, china, silver, and glassware. So, um, it, it'll be somewhere around, we're thinking about, um, twenty-six dollars, twenty-seven dollars plus, plus tax and gratuity per person. Um, plus if we decide on dessert and all of those things. So, I think that's why the seventy-five dollar, um, because it'll cover the cost of the hall. You know, all of that in it, but, um, the family style, it would actually be served um, at the tables versus us getting up and standing in line, which could probably save us on space and and time, so maybe, um, I'll scan this in.
Yeah.
Um, um, uh, Ms. Albertine?
Yes, ma'am.
Did they say when they were gonna have an updated pricing list?
No, he was on his way to, out of the country, so I can contact him, I think he should be back by now.
Okay, because maybe we can scan this in, I'll scale this in so that everybody has it. And then we can start thinking about what our.
Did I not give everybody a copy of that?
I think for those that of us that were there, we all got.
Yeah, okay, I'm limited to my mobility right now, I can't get up and move around real fast, but.
I'll scan it in for you.
Um, are, are people comfortable with family style at an event like this?
Uh, Angie, how was our serve? Were we family style or did they serve us table? How did we do that?
So, um, I don't remember, uh.
I think they brought our meals to the table. They, they brought each individual plate to the table.
And if we do that, I think that, um, even with that, I still think we can meet our budget. But we would still have to decide on, I, I don't know if we want just one entree.
Or maybe a choice.
Our meal should cost more than thirty-five dollars and it still leaves us forty dollars.
So, I would say then, we could, we could maybe give an option, so there's, um, if we just go without the buffet style and just go with plated meals, um, you have the option of chicken marsala, Alaskan salmon, um, recent chicken, that's basically, um, herb, baked herb and chicken. Uh, prime rib or beef au jus.
Hmm.
Um, medallions of beef tenderloin are pretty much the options. And if we could do a vegetarian, it would have to probably be some type of pasta, I'm, I'm thinking. Um, but those ranges, they, the prices aren't correct, they all, they all have gone up. Um, so, um, everything still would be about the same price. So, if you, but they would just have to. Now, you, we have to get into managing, somebody has to manage the meals.
Yeah.
Um, when people.
Register.
Yeah, they will have to register an RSVP. And, um, that could be, that's a challenge in itself.
Well, we just keep it simple to three different main courses.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, for sure.
Sure, or one, and don't give my option, just vegetarian.
We only had one on ours, and we always had success with that. We either had the chicken or the stuffed pork chops or sliced turkey or whatever. We never had three or four or two or three options, because that costs us too many.
Yeah, so that's a, a option. And then they do have it where you can do, um, you can do an addition too, so I guess we could just ask. But, um, most places do chicken, and then a pasta for the vegetarians. And then, and then you don't have any, um, have to manage it, because otherwise you're gonna have to manage it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
So that's my, my report.
Great, great, thank you. Let me know it's a cash bar too, so that's helpful for us. Um, we are now.
Back from the state about whether or not we have to have a, a permit to at the auction. I'm still waiting on a response. I did turn in my form.
Okay, great. Um, we are almost done, commissioners' comments. Any additional comments?
Um, I, just lots of graduations going on, lots of things with Michigan City schools. Um, I went to the Ivy Tech graduation, which several of our Michigan City High School students partook in, um, through their work, um, during high school. Um, my daughter being one of them, so that was nice to go to that ceremony. Um, their graduation is Sunday, so steer clear of that area. Um, a lot of, I saw an article on the Michigan City Area Schools, um, app. Uh, lots of adults who received their, um, high school equivalency diploma recently. So congratulations to them. Also, you have your sixth grade, sixth graders moving out of the elementary building to the middle school next year. So just lots of, everybody's moving on. This is a nice way to end the year always. That's all.
Um, the last thing that I'll say is that the Torchbearer Awards are coming up and, um, we can nominate someone. So, um, just be thinking about that as we move forward, and I'll, I'll get that date information when that's due as well for the next meeting. All right, thank you guys so much. We will, um, adjourn our meeting at six thirty-four. And we will be meeting at our regular scheduled time on June sixteenth. It will be just to kind of complete this task that we have at hand, so, all right, thank you.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I always forget that.
Oops, motion to adjourn, please.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.